It's now six o'clock and we will begin the Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Adamchek.
Here.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
On deck.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Commissioner Mitten.
Here.
Mayor, we have five commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Thank you. Will you please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening. We have one proclamation this evening honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Day. Please send silence to your cell phones. Whereas January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five marks the observance of the Martin Luther King Junior Federal Holiday and Service Day, established by Public Law number ninety-eight dash one-four-four in nineteen eighty-three. And whereas this King Holiday and Service Act highlights remembrance and celebration and encourages people everywhere to reflect on the principles of nonviolent social change, racial equality, community, and humanitarian service, and interracial cooperation. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Junior devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas celebrating Dr. King's life and spirit through community-wide recognition and service on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, bringing our citizens together and strengthening our communities and nations. It is appropriate for the city of Manhattan, Kansas, to support a community celebration in observance of the King Holiday and Day of Service honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. And whereas each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunity for all of our citizens, I now therefore, Susan Adamchek, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim January eighteenth, sorry, two thousand and twenty-five, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Community Day, Community Celebration and Day of Service in Manhattan, Kansas, and urge all people to join and pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior and apply his life principles and teachings of service to inspire others to serve and remember his spirit of community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I will just let the community know about some of the activities that are scheduled. The theme for this year, for the celebration, was a quote from Dr. King taken directly from his letter from the Birmingham jail. And that is, "We are bound together in a single garment of destiny." That same theme was the writing prompt for the art and writing contest. That is an annual event from our committee. And the winners will be announced at the community celebration. That is this Saturday at two o'clock. The public is invited. We hope everyone will come. That's at the Manhattan Art Center at two P.M. Also, during the celebration, we have a speaker, Mr. Curtis Pitts, who is the president and CEO of the International Institute to Improve Race Relations. And we will be announcing the winners of the Martin Luther King Spirit Award, which is an annual award that we present to members of our community who have really dedicated a great deal of time and energy to work to improve our community. On Monday, the federal holiday, there will be a showing of the movie Selma at the Wairum. It is free to the public. All you need to do is go to the Wairum website and reserve your tickets. There is no cost. And that, the doors open at one-thirty, and the movie begins at two P.M. On Saturday, the twenty-fifth of January, is the Manhattan Day of Service. And students from K-State, Hands-on K-State, will deploy throughout our community to be engaged in community service. If anyone's interested in joining or participating or aiding, that's the place to get in touch, Hands-on K-State. And then the Laying of the Reef is on January thirty-first, and that's in the Union Courtyard at the University and at the MLK Bus, which is at, just across the street, at Ahearn Field House. So I hope many of you will come, and perhaps even your children have participated in the art and writing contest. Those winners will be announced and will be displayed at the Art Center for a couple weeks afterwards. Thank you.
The only thing she didn't mention was this is the twentieth anniversary of our art and writing contest. We have influenced a lot of people in a, for a long time, and I'm looking forward to continuing to do that for the next twenty years. Might not be around, but it's gonna be, we're gonna have it. Thank you very much.
We have several people who have signed up for public comments. These are comments not related to items on tonight's agenda. Members of the public who signed up on the list will go first. Any other members in the audience may stand and be recognized to come forward. Please state your name and residential address and/or organization you are representing. Each speaker has five minutes, can speak only once, and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Jeremy Harmon, if you would come to the podium. Thank you.
It's good to see you again. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. I'm Jeremy Harmon. I serve as the Community Relations Director for the Center of Hope Ministry Manhattan's Winter Shelter. I admire the proclamation made in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. The legacy of Dr. King encompasses influential decisions, monumental actions, and steadfast progressions of humanitarian rights that reach far beyond the civil rights movement. Your proclamation encourages people to reflect on the principles of social change, equality, community, and humanitarian service, and ends with, "Whereas each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with the increased opportunity for all our citizens." There's a vulnerable population of our citizens that are often forgotten, neglected, or not considered when it comes to their safety or well-being. This was evident in the lead-up to and on Saturday, January fourth. I am not here to criticize the valiant efforts and work done by our public works, city employees, the contractors. They all deserve an abundance of praise for the daunting tasks that they had. I am here to bring awareness, though, to an area that we can and must improve in order to save lives. On January second, there was much discussion about the incoming storm, and Riley County Emergency Management made a post about preparedness that was then shared by the city government. And then on January third, a post was made that Parks and Rec facilities would close at four P.M. the next day due to the impending storm. Early during the day on January fourth, however, weather conditions began to deteriorate rapidly into what would become a historic winter storm. By one P.M., Emergency Management posted an update about worsening road conditions and our C.P.D. going into the emergency accident reporting phase. At one-ten P.M., we received a call from a B.A.B. employee who had informed us the Manhattan Public Library was closing at two P.M. and was concerned about a plan for the homeless during the storm. Between one-ten and one-thirty, we attempted to contact other agencies, organizations, and locations that provide daytime shelter, only to find that they had either already closed or were closing early. This included city and county buildings that typically provide daytime relief. Recognizing that the need for emergency shelter was not addressed, we jumped into action to open as soon as we could. This presented a challenge, though, as we are an all-volunteer organization that relies on scheduled volunteers. We use borrowed space and operate overnight to fill the gap after other services have closed. Daytime or last-minute emergency operations are not something we are prepared for. However, after coordination, we were able to open the shelter at three P.M. While we were able to accomplish that, it created an hour-long gap where at least six of our regular guests were not aware that we were able to open and spend the night fending for themselves. The information chain broke. We are grateful to First Congregational Church for allowing us to remain open outside of our agreed times around the clock for forty-one hours until the morning of January sixth, when thankfully B.A.B. opened. In the ten nights since January fourth, we have averaged seventeen guests, with six of those nights exceeding eighteen. As a matter of fact, our lowest night during that period was on January fourth, where we had twelve. Remember the six that didn't make it to us that night? Since that night, we've also welcomed eleven new individuals, including a mother and her child. In the six weeks that we have been open, fifty-one people have stayed at least one night with us. Our most on one night was twenty-two, and that was during this period. Which leads us to now consider, what are our options when we reach capacity? And it's likely. We don't, we currently don't have an answer. February is typically the coldest and month with the most extreme weather in this area, so time is really not on our side. I'm open to a dialogue with you or any other staff members on how we can partner to address this complex issue. Thank you again for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mayor.
Pastor Kayla.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to share a public comment. I'm Kayla Simmonswood, and I serve as the pastor of First Congregational Church located at seven hundred points. Our church houses the Center of Hope Winter Shelter. I'm here today to urge you to take a more active role in caring for those who lack adequate shelter during weather, like the weather we've been having lately. This includes not only those who are unhoused, but it also includes those who lack access to adequate heat in their homes. As my colleague mentioned, the Center of Hope was the only option for about twenty people in our community during the recent blizzard. Organizing and coordinating safe shelter for citizens during an extreme weather event is the responsibility of our local government. We should not be relying solely on volunteer-led organizations to do this lifesaving work, especially when there's been no coordination, or planning, or communication with the volunteers who are running the shelter. I understand that the Riley County Emergency Management is the designated disaster agency for the county, with the responsibility for coordinating the mitigation of preparedness for, response to, and recovery from disasters. I assume that the city of Manhattan works closely with Riley County in determining how city residents are best served and what city resources are used in partnership with and at the discretion, direction of the county during extreme weather events. My concern is that those who lack safe and adequate shelter during extreme cold and heat are falling through the cracks. If the Center of Hope had not scrambled to stay open for those forty-one hours, more than a dozen people would have been out in a historic snowstorm with nowhere to turn for shelter, and there almost certainly would have been deaths in our community on Sunday, January the fifth. I feel certain that all of you share my belief that the lives of our neighbors matter. They matter so very much, and that if one of our neighbors died due to negligence on the part of our community to adequately care for them during a storm, you, like me, would be horrified and grieved. And I deeply hope this is something that we can work together to avoid. I can only imagine how difficult it must be to cover all the needs during an event like the one we've just had, and I commend the city for working so hard. The city has also done a great job with communicating updates, and I thank you for that. I worry that those who are unhoused were not considered as many of those decisions were made. It seems that the sense here in Manhattan is that nonprofits are responsible for the welfare of our neighbors who are struggling. We have an amazing nonprofit network here in Manhattan, truly. But if the sense is that the nonprofits have it covered, I am here to tell you, we don't. When the whole city closed down on Saturday, January fourth, there were no nonprofits ready to step up and care for folks who needed it that day or all day on Sunday. If leadership at the city thought that it was handled, it was not. There was a huge, potentially deadly gap. We're so grateful that the Center of Hope realized this and sprung into action. I am also grateful for the people at First Congregational Church who saw the need and didn't hesitate to extend operations in our own building. But what we are asking of volunteers and nonprofits is simply too much. During this blizzard, we relied on everyday uncompensated citizens with no specialized training to put their own lives at risk to get to the shelter and help save other people's lives. Citizens were literally hiking through the snow to volunteer, cook meals, and look in park bathrooms to try and round up those guests that we hadn't seen yet. This is beyond what volunteers should be asked to do. Emergency management on this level should be staffed by trained, compensated, and insured first responders. I urge the city to work more closely with Riley County Emergency Management to create and communicate a plan for future weather events, both the heat and the cold. I have shared this request with the county commissioners as well, and like Jeremy, I welcome further dialogue about how we can partner to ensure that everyone in our community is cared for. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Kayla. Gary, I believe you're next.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gary Oles. I live at thirty-three oh eight Frontier Circle. I just want to take this opportunity, and I hope to make it a regular thing annually, and just extend my appreciation and thank you for the service that you provide as a governing body for the city. It's not an easy job. I just want to take a minute and recognize the fact that you sacrifice a lot of time, you read a lot of materials, you try to come to the best decision that you believe would work for the city. And I just, as one person, I just want to express my gratitude, and I'm sure there are many others that appreciate it too, but they don't necessarily step up and say that. And I just wanted to make that point. The other thing I want to ask you to look at when you go into your retreat, I think in a couple weeks or something like that, I received my tax statement, and my recollection was that when you passed the two thousand and twenty-five budget for two thousand and twenty-four taxes, you were gonna tax about thirty-eight million, three hundred thousand, ballpark, rounding, okay? Which resulted in about a three-point-nine-nine mil increase, or something like that, somewhere in that neighborhood. When I got my tax statement, I noticed that the county, on your behalf, is gonna bill thirty-six-point-two-four-three million to Riley County residents and another three-point-two-nine-nine million to Potawatomi County commercial properties. That's actually thirty-nine million, five hundred and forty-two dollars, far more by one-point-two million dollars than what you budgeted. So the question is, why? Why aren't you at thirty-eight million? You're actually one-point-two million over, which means one-point-seven mil additional of that three-point-nine didn't really need to be charged. I'd like you to take a look at that and perhaps discuss with the staff why that the case is, why that is the case. It's my understanding, the reason that happens, is because it's been a practice of this staff and the city and the commission, I assume, that the two percent default ratio is calculated into when you figure out the property taxes, which means you tax us more for the people who don't pay. That's wrong. That's fundamentally wrong. Now, maybe it's five dollars for me and five dollars for each of you, in terms of dollars, which isn't much, I agree. But let's look at the principle. Does every other city in the state of Kansas, does every other county include the default ratio so that other people get to make it up? Which, by the way, you eventually collect that tax, in theory, because most people pay because they don't want to lose their property. And those that don't lose their property, and the county puts it up for auction, and then you still collect the taxes in the future. So please, when you go into your retreat, perhaps, if it's worthy, make that an item of discussion as to why there's a, in this case, one-point-two million overage in what's going to be billed. It's just something to consider. I appreciate the time that you give me this past year to talk, and of course, the Lord willing, I'll be back to talk about the two thousand and twenty-six budget, where a whole new opportunity exists because, I don't remember, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen million dollars of TIF is gonna come off the record, which is going to provide each of you about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars more in revenue for the two thousand and twenty-seven budget, I think it is, so we get confused in terms of the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Seeing no one approaching the podium, we will now close public comment. I believe we're gonna have an update from city staff about the recent storm, the emergency operations.
Mayor Wyatt Thompson, interim director of Public Works, just wanted to provide a kind of a midpoint response or assessment of our response to the storm in terms of opening the city back up and allowing people to move around again. Just, as we all know, winter storm Blair, unprecedented storm in Manhattan, nearly fifteen inches of snow, record-breaking numbers in terms of the amount of snowfall that we had seen. So, you know, no one here had seen that much snow in Manhattan in a single day before. But we were ready to respond. We had thirty-one team members from our Public Works Operations Crew that were able to mobilize quickly. We had a couple members of our traffic team, as well as six members of the Public Utilities Department that joined us in our plowing operations. We had twenty-one pieces of equipment out on the streets twenty-four hours a day from the midday on the fourth until midday on the ninth. And we worked through the blizzard, except for a few moments where we had to pull our trucks in because they literally could not see the road in front of them, so we pulled them back for their safety. Just very proud of the work that the Public Works Team and the others that supported our crews put in. They worked long hours, had some family emergencies in the midst of it, they were working to help each other, to pull each other out of snowdrifts. We were shuffling, or shuffling people back and forth to try to get them to work safely or home from work safely. So just, you know, there are community members as well, and they were, they were working hard to make sure that we got streets open and safe for the other community members that we work alongside. We were not alone in the response. We had another forty or so individuals from Parks and Recreation that were working to open facilities at the airport to keep, to reopen the terminal and reopen the runways so flights could go out and come back in, as well as Manhattan Fire Department responding to a number of emergencies during the event. Each of those department directors is here tonight. If you wanted to ask them questions or catch them later to hear some of the stories of their staff staying overnight in the airport to keep things running for passengers who were stranded, the Code Blue that was a successful save in our community by the Fire Department. Fire Department was triaging a lot of our reportits that were coming in, said they were kind of ground-truthing what they were seeing as complaint or problem areas, and then prioritizing those so that our crews could get out to the, to the most impacted areas the fastest. So just very much appreciate the teamwork that we saw from all departments to support our efforts. One of the things that we implemented very early in the process was a snowball roundtable. We met daily or twice daily to have check-ins from the fourth through the twelfth. We had representatives from City Manager's Office, Public Works, our PIO, Fire Department, and Park and Rec. We had check-ins individually throughout the days with community partners to try to understand what their needs were, what issues they were seeing, how we could best mobilize our resources in order to open streets back up to support USD three D three or EMS's response efforts, or the ATABUS to get it back up and running. From those daily or twice-daily meetings, we were able to put out a lot of information to the community in terms of what our plans were, where we were at in our process, just and the response to that public engagement through social media and other, other points of contact has been very successful. We had, on the city page, we had thirty-one posts in that course of about eleven days prior, leading up to the storm and through the storm. And you can see some of the statistics there. You know, we're still compiling some of these numbers and the, and things, so we'll have more data to share later. But, but very well-received, lots of engagement with these posts, and overall, I think the tenor of the responses from the community was very, very positive and appreciative of the hard work that our crews were doing. Of course, we know, we were taking feedback about, you know, hey, you missed my street. When are you coming back to my, to my area? We're having some stuck cars here. And so it was, it was a tool for us to also evaluate, along with our reportit system, to find those troubled areas and deploy resources where we needed to. Parks and Rec and the airport also had their own social media ongoing, as well as we were using X, and so just, just tried to, tried to bring a lot of, a lot of input out to the community about what our plans were and what we were able to accomplish. We've had a tremendous amount of contractor support to supplement our crews. We've partnered with Midwest Concrete Materials, Bayer Construction, Tossig Landscape, Blueville, Prairie Stone, and Garabay, because they have, they have additional people, they have, they have the right tools, the right pieces of equipment to load and haul snow away. And so we've utilized these groups out on some of our primary streets to open up additional lanes to haul the snow away. There's only so much room where we can push it to, and so they were able to come in behind us and clear areas that were presenting traffic hazards. A lot of support from our traffic division as well, as well as our C.P.D. in order to make sure we had proper, safe traffic control set up while some of those operations were happening, so people knew we were essentially creating mobile work zones as we moved down streets to haul the snow away. Shout-out to Brian Johnson, our city engineer, who leveraged his relationships with each of these companies to get them onboard quickly and deploy them to the, to the areas where we needed them most. So we say we've got a lot of snow. How much is a lot? You know, we got almost fifteen inches. The drifts were three or four feet or maybe more, depending on what part of town you were in. By the ninth of January, we had plowed five hundred lane miles, which is essentially like driving a plow truck from Manhattan to Denver at about six miles an hour, so you know, that's a long trip. You know, we, we hauled with our contract partners five hundred truckloads of snow out of downtown in Aggieville. And then by the thirteenth, we'd hauled over two thousand tons of snow out of our major roadways. And each of our plows is tracking, you know, three hundred and fifty to six hundred and fifty miles because we've been back and forth across roads multiple times, multiple passes to try to, try to respond to those troubled spots, as well as putting down treatment before the storm and throughout the past ten days in order to encourage that melting as temperatures have kind of fluctuated into that zone where we could see that treatment being effective. And then some fun stats. If, if we assume there was sixteen inches across most of our roadways, it's about forty-two million cubic feet of snow that we have pushed with a plow. And if we push all of that into single piles, we could fill City Pool almost four hundred and seventy times, or twelve thousand train cars, or fill up Bill Snyder Family Stadium four hundred feet tall. And if we melted it down, we could fill City Park Pool nearly. So just a ton of snow. Brian Johnson loves numbers and was able to crunch some of those, some of that data for me. Very much appreciate the math whiz. But it's a lot of snow. It'll, it'll make a very big pile, and we do have big piles. We're deploying, we're hauling that snow to a number of locations around town, a number of city parks, a number of private locations have also allowed us to dump snow in some of those places as well. So we're trying to move it off the streets and get into areas where it won't be as big of a deal as it melts. We are currently engaged in a snow blitz, which is kind of similar to our pothole blitz or similar to our spring cleanup. We have divided the community up into five zones, and starting today, we had crews from our city crews, as well as contract crews in all five districts of the city. We are working on public streets in each of those areas of town. Our goal is to widen out the lanes to at least two cars, so two cars could pass on the streets with a focus on the, on alley entrances, on alleys themselves in the ward districts, on opening up the ADA ramps, so that, you know, hopefully homeowners have cleared maybe to the ramp, but they couldn't deal with the big windows and the big piles that were at the intersections. Were able to remove those big piles, and then making sure those intersections and corners are safe and that... then making sure those intersections and corners are safe and the turn lanes exist and the people can, can navigate around. In some, in some parts of, of town, it, it may not be curb to curb, but it, we, our goal is to widen so that, you know, the cars can, can have a little bit more space than they do today with the single lane that we tried to clear with the initial response. As we move through the community, that next day, we will be sending around another truck for, to treat those areas, to encourage more of that snow that is left in streets or cul-de-sacs to melt off. Right before this meeting, we did get updates from all of our contractors. And so, these blue circles represent generally the areas where we were all working today. In Zone Four, they were working north between Marlat and Tuttle. And so, basically, from Zone Four to here is with the zone that they were working in, in that part of town. So, you can see some of the contractors are kind of dividing and conquering. They have multiple crews that they've deployed and they're working to, to meet in the middle, or to, you know, to move across the, the different parts of the community. So, our, our next steps. This week, we'll complete the snow blitz. Then, next week, we'll assess conditions that might remain and decide if we need any additional response. We'll complete our after-action report and collect all of our data from all the crews that were, that were working and get, you know, assess that, make sure we're better prepared for the next event. And then, you know, finally, the, the thing I'm most excited about, about this entire snow event is that, you know, we need to name our snow plows. And so, lots of communities have done that. It's been a fun activity. Right now, all of, all of our snow plows just have random numbers. And so, we'll, we'll engage the community through this year and by, we'll be ready for the next snowstorm with the more creative names for our fleet. So, happy to answer questions, if you have any. And like I said, there are others here that can speak to their snow response, if you want that, tonight as well.
Commissioners, any questions for what? I think we can unanimously offer our congratulations and our appreciation. We were very grateful for the routine communication that was directed to us each day. But I think most of us were monitoring social media and saw many of those very appreciative remarks from the public. So, on behalf of the entire community, we do thank you. And it was, it was great that as much was done as quickly and as safely as it was. So, thank you. And please extend our appreciation to the entire crew. One figure I didn't see on here was, at one point, more than a hundred people from city staff. It's a quarter of our personnel were engaged in some level of working on this. So, it's much appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions for Director Johnson or Airport? All right. We, thank you very much. And we will now move into Commissioner comments. Commissioner McCullough?
Yeah. Just thank you, besides the city staff and all the other people who worked. What about the great article on Meadowlark that was in the paper, but also, I know, the hospitals? People, you know, came and stayed and slept so they could be nurses and doctors and take care of people. And it was a, a really wonderful thing to hear about. Having heard the issue of homelessness, that does concern me because I think we were under the impression that that was more or less being managed. The county has the role of being in charge of emergency management. And to wit, I've been on a number of work, tabletop exercises when we talked about this kind of thing. The Director of the County Emergency Management retired just a couple of years ago after many years. And there's a new director, and I'm not saying in any way that he's not qualified, but perhaps we need to revisit some of these things. There's no question that with climate change, we're going to see some more events, be they fire. You know, looking at California, I was talking to Daniel today, the Cedars in the north part of Manhattan, should they ever catch on fire, would, it would look like LA. I mean, so we really, you know, we, we have, I thought we had it all sort of laid out, whose responsibility and how to bring in the Red Cross, how to make sure things were open, like Potter Hall and that kind of thing, although maybe you couldn't have gotten to Potter Hall. But I think we will definitely revisit those discussions and make sure that we are more on top of it next time. Let's hope there isn't a next time.
Yeah, I was really proud of the entire community. You know, I was on social media a lot, and the amount of, you know, mutual aid that I saw among the community was phenomenal. But I do hope that we can work on some, some better support from, from the government to try and have that a little bit more organized. But phenomenal job communicating by the staff. I don't think there was ever a question of where the crews were and the activities that we were doing to try and clear things up. And really just, it was really great to see our community kind of really come together in, in such a historic, such a historic storm.
Just want to echo all the comments. Really want to thank everybody on staff and for all the hard work that went in. And with an event like that, it really does take everyone to chip in. Departments that usually wouldn't help out with things have to help out. And ones like the airport or something who usually have to get involved, have to get involved. You know, everyone will always have complaints, and I heard stuff from some folks, well, my little town in Denver could take care of this, just like, just like that. And I'd say, well, you know, when they, when you build a church, you don't do it for Christmas Mass or Easter Sunday. You expect on those days, people will be standing up. You'll have to bring extra chairs and maybe set up TVs in other rooms to watch. So, for a hundred and twenty-five-year storm, I mean, it's going to take a little bit to get caught up and get things taken care of. And I just want to thank everybody.
I mean, I'll echo what everyone else has said, but also want to point out, I've heard from many people who live outside of the city and other cities in Kansas, and they have complimented the city on how well we handled that compared to their large cities, and how much better our roads were. Just want to appreciate everyone for, for all the work that they've done.
And just don't forget, a storm like this will cause a lot of potholes. So, we are aware of that, and we will do the best that we can to get those patched up and, and fixed in the springtime.
Thank you, commissioners. I would also like to just make a brief acknowledgement, because we've missed several meetings over the last several weeks, I'd like to acknowledge the recent retirement of Assistant Police Director Kurt Muldruff, who gave decades of service to our community. And we did not have an opportunity to thank him publicly from this dais, but there was a very well-attended going-away ceremony for him at Potter Hall several weeks ago. All right. With no additional comments, we will move into approving, look, considering the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the commission and may be approved on one motion. A commissioner may request an item be removed for separate discussion and considered immediately following the consent agenda. Comments from the public related to any item on the consent agenda will be limited to one speaking opportunity for up to five minutes.
I'd like to move item E for more discussion and explanation from staff.
All three of the, the...
Yep, all three.
Anyone else? Do we need to take a vote to...
I'm sorry.
Yeah. If you want to have more discussion and a presentation from staff on item E, we should probably go ahead and take action on the consent agenda, take public comment on the consent agenda as well.
All right. So... We need to move, do we need a motion to remove the item?
No, we can, public comment.
All right. Is there any public comment on items on the consent agenda? I believe we did have Ann Koch. All right.
I think she wants to talk about item E.
All right.
And that's been removed, so...
So, wait until we, we'll, we'll vote on the remaining items, and then we'll have opportunity for that. Yes, please. Thirty seconds. So...
I move approval of the consent agenda, except for item E. I don't see any.
Any comments with the other items on the consent agenda?
Do you have comments on some, all right, please?
Evening. My name's Mel Boris, and I just have a brief comment about the...
Your address, Mel, please.
I'm sorry?
Your address, please.
Oh, nineteen eighteen Humboldt Street, Mayor. Thank you. I just have a brief comment on the item about the change in infill regulation standards. And this has gone through the process without much of public knowledge of, of the consequences of, of these changes. And I do request that that be put on the discussion as well, so we could perhaps look at that and, and see if we can get a better understanding. Thank you.
So, to be specific, are you referring also to the items on...
Well, it's somewhat related, but it's, it's, it affects all the older neighborhoods as well.
Got it. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mel.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
With the exception of... Second.
Commissioner McCullough has moved to approve the consent agenda, absent item E. Commissioner Opelt has seconded. Can we call the roll, please?
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Stephanie, do you have a, are you able to respond to questions, please?
Stephanie, I just asked for this because I think a lot of people aren't clear on what these new and old zoning things mean. If you could just explain, you know, what's the difference between CD and BC, and what areas do those encompass?
Thank you. So, we, we will start with the West Fourth Subarea, the rezoning for that one. This is, let me pull up the map. So, this is what you're looking at, is a staff report from the planning board. All of the properties were listed here individually. And then, here is a map of the, of the areas that this would include. And then, there's a further map showing the current zoning of each of those parcels. There are some that are within PUDs that do not need to remain as a PUD. And then, there are some RM properties within here, and then a majority of it is community commercial. Those are being, so per the Beyond Tomorrow Downtown Plan, it called for the zoning to be more consistent with the type of land use and the design standards of, of development. And so, the eastern part of this district would be CD with the business commercial to the west. The CD is our downtown commercial district, so it would mirror the type of development that we see along Points, along Fourth Street, Leavenworth. The BC is a kind of a less intense type of commercial use, but it's still compatible with residential districts. We actually have quite a bit of BC already along Points.
And so, like, if you scroll back up, it looks like, you know, in the RM there, you know, I'm assuming, I'm assuming there's some homes there and things like that. They'll, they won't really be affected. They'll still be able to...
Yes.
Exist, if we're just kind of making it a little bit more contiguous?
Yeah. So, this is, really, we can use zoning like this to help inform future opportunities for redevelopment. And so, if there were, actually, most, I think, right, of these are vacant. If there was some sort of redevelopment opportunity, we would have it, it wouldn't be allowed to come back as that medium-density residential, but it could come back as some sort of other higher-intensity type of use. Residential still is allowed in both the BC and the CD. It just can't be a single-family type of structure. Let me pull up my use table real quick for those districts. Were there other questions on, on this one? Okay, so I'm, okay. So, let me correct myself. Looking at the BC district, it would still allow for single-family, both attached and detached. The CD district, the, the downtown commercial district, would not. And then, for multifamily, there, it's a limited use in BC. It would be permitted, though, within that CD district. So, some of these, I'd have to go back and compare. Some of these right here, any of these single-family houses, they would be, they would still be a conforming use.
I mean, so, why does it have to either or, I mean, why is it either? Why, isn't it all CD or all BC?
Sure. Because the BC is more compatible with residential zones. So, we use the BC as kind of a transition zone from a higher-intensity downtown type of use back to that single-family neighborhood to the west.
Okay.
And with this, so, this would allow for some maybe type of more like neighborhood market or cafe or something like that to exist among that neighborhood if somebody wanted to, to go and do something like that?
Yeah. And there may be some. I'd have to look specifically. There may be some limitations to how big that type of...
Sure.
Grocery store could be. But yes, it would allow most commercial uses like that.
Okay.
Next one?
Actually, Mayor Adamcheck, we do need to approve each of these individually. So, I would recommend approving item after we finish them.
Sure. I can...
And we also need to take public comment on item one.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment on item one under section E? Approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning approximately twenty-six lots south of downtown. All right. Seeing no public comment, we will...
I move that we approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning approximately twenty-six lots south of downtown to either downtown commercial district or business commercial district.
Second.
Commissioner Opelt has made a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning approximately twenty-six lots south of downtown to either downtown commercial CD district or business commercial BC district. And Commissioner Minton has seconded. Clerk, can you please read the, take the roll?
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Stephanie, can you address the tracks west of downtown?
Yes. So, I have the map pulled up. Again, the, the pink here is business commercial. There's a little bit of RM. A substantial portion of this is actually the parking lot of our library. And so, the Beyond Tomorrow Downtown Plan calls for an extension of that kind of downtown commercial type of feel further along this corridor. And you can see here, we actually, we excluded the residential that is along Houston. It's not being suggested that it be within the CD district. Let me pull. And so, all of that, that entire area in this case would be the downtown commercial.
I believe that during the planning board meeting, there was some question about the church, the Episcopal Church. Is that the block where the CD is actually?
Yes. Yes, I believe, I believe that's right here.
Is there any issue with there being rezoned under that category?
I, let me look real quick at our use table. I believe that our planner that presented this said that it would still be a permitted use, but I will let you know.
And I believe they said something about perhaps building a rectory on that, on that property or nearby?
Or perhaps using the Encore Shop as, that was originally a rectory.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Uh, let's see. Pleasant Assembly. It's a permitted use in all, almost all of our districts. So it wouldn't be impacted at all by this rezoning.
Even the rectory? That would be?
I-
Would that be considered residential, or would it just be part of the building?
It would be part of a, it'd be associated with the church.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion to, is there pub, I will get this. I have, what, how many, another half hour? Is there a public comment on this rezoning? All right. Seeing no one approaching the podium. Is there a motion to approve item E two?
I move we approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning ten tracks west of downtown to downtown commercial CD district.
Second?
Okay. Commissioner Minton has, has made a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning ten tracks west of downtown to downtown commercial. And Commissioner McCullough has seconded. City Clerk, can you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Thanks, yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. Stephanie, if we can talk about the-
Number three.
Number three.
This is three thirty and three twenty-six Vatier. This, just kind of a little bit background, this did go to Planning Board a couple of weeks ago. It was recommended for approval in a vote of four to two. There were some public comments that were received by the public at that meeting. The site here is identified in red. This is looking at our current zoning district. So it's currently zoned RL with our established neighborhood overlay. The applicant is seeking to rezone it to RM, both lots. Taking a look at, sorry, bear with me as I scroll down. This is a look at our future land use map. It did anticipate that this, this block here that has our subject parcel, it would, it forecasted it being, that becoming commercial. So that would be consistent with the McDonald's that's right there, the other fast food establishments that are in the near vicinity. If there's, I don't know if there's specific questions you had on, on this one?
I was kind of curious. You know, in the staff report, it mentioned that, you know, and I see that RLM is less dense than RM. Is that correct?
So RLM is our low to medium-density land use in our future land use plan.
Hmm.
The next one would be RMH, so residential, medium and high.
Okay.
So there's only those two categories that we have in the land use plan. Oh, yeah, here's the other one.
Okay.
But are you talking about the zoning district that it's going?
Yeah, I'm talking about the, the proposed zoning that we're looking at moving it to. It just, it is, it, if I'm reading it correctly, that particular, these two particular lots would be zoned slightly higher density than RLM?
Uh-
Or would it still be within?
So it'd be consistent with RLM, future land use. Let's go back to the zoning map. So it would be slightly higher than what the RL current zoning is. And the way that our, our planners approach that is that you already have commercial here in the vicinity. So it would be more advisable to have this kind of transition down, or transition in, in residential density versus having commercial there. So the other, here's RM again, on the other side of about two blocks over.
So, and like with commercial, if, if we were to follow the plan and that area were to be rezoned to commercial, somebody could put in a drive-through or something like that-
Correct.
On that lot?
Correct. And this lot has been vacant, I think it's since 2008. And there hasn't been much movement that, according to the, kind of, the information that we received in the application, just for your knowledge. If you have specific questions about the OEN being removed, John Adams, our assistant director, did put together a table that kind of compares, kind of, if we had OEN, if we just had the RM district, and then if a building was proposed, that's five, or more than five units. Do you want me to kind of give you a breakdown of what-
Sure.
Of those? Okay, so if, the only difference between retaining the OEN and just having the straight RM zoning district, which is what the applicant is requesting, there, there would be, within the OEN, some roof pitch guidelines where they have to have a certain slope on their roof. We don't require that in the RM, RM district. Metal would not be a material that's allowed as, as a siding. And then the other one is that there is a requirement that fifteen percent of the front facade be a window area. Those are the only three differences, those are the only three requirements that the OEN would have that the plain RM district would not. As far as building height, building coverage, those are the same in both districts. The front setback, it's actually further back from the road in the RM than it would be in the OEN. And then, so if, if the developer or if the applicant chose to put a building in, that's more than six or more units, there are a series of different design restrictions that they would be held to. A lot of those are more restrictive than what the OEN would be. I can run, I can just give you the categories, and if you want to know more, maybe about any category, we can go into it. Are you comfortable with what I've provided?
Can you clarify, I believe when I read the application, the front of the building will be facing, is it Fourth Street?
Fourth, correct.
And-
And I, I would just add, I'm sorry, Mayor, I would just add that even though this applicant has a specific product in mind, we should also approach it from, we can't conditionally zone the property. So we need to keep in mind that there's maybe other proposals that would come forward if, if that building weren't to, to work out.
Am I remembering correctly also that the current applicant only owns the-
The corner.
Right.
And I believe it's this, this lot right here, and then the one on the end are both owned by the same individual. And then the, there's a single-family home here, kind of in the middle of those. That has separate ownership.
So the, I guess from left to right, lots two and four are owned by the same person?
Correct.
And, okay. And so I'm assuming because if they couldn't get the owner of the third lot to apply, they couldn't do the whole block?
And I don't know if they engaged with that individual or not.
But it would, it would take that one owner to be able to be in with the other two-
Correct.
To get the whole block. Okay.
Other questions?
No, I think it's very clear.
All right, thank you. Is there a public comment on this item? Anne, is this the item you wanted to make comment on?
I'm a coward.
Good evening, Mel Boris, again, at nineteen eighteen Humboldt Street. Just wanted to follow up a bit with the letter I sent you earlier today. About, my comments include the following citizen and planning board concerns about the recommendation on this rezoning. Start out here with, how will the infill be designed to contribute to neighborhood stabilization? Not only this proposal, but as Stephanie said, future proposals that could go in there. Why was the established neighborhood design overlay removed from the rezoning proposal? That was partially answered just a few minutes ago by Stephanie, but I am yet to see the listing from John Adams, and I think the public should see it at. What are the consequences of the infill-ready zoning regulations to this and other established neighborhoods? How many more residents and cars are expected? How will they access and park on-site? And how many will be on the street? How large can infill building or buildings be? And in what direction will they be oriented? I believe Stephanie just said that this one is oriented towards the west, towards the neighborhood, which is very good, I believe, for inclusion. And I hope that other ideas for the property, if there are any, would, would follow the same. Should another rezoning classification, such as residential, low-density, attached, be considered? And I say this because the, the townhouse design illustrations from the recent three hundred North Eleventh Street tax abatement application could work well if the Vatier Street rezoning proposal is changed to residential, low-density, attached, with fronts facing west along Fourth, Fourth Street to be inclusive with the neighborhood. Although the plan needs both of the lots, it provides an ample transition area for the remaining three twenty and three sixteen Vatier Street homes as a trade-off for partially blocking their west views and sunlight. The valuable updated house at three twenty-six Vatier Street could be relocated elsewhere in the existing or in other older neighborhoods. It should be noted that both the applicant and the neighborhood may be interested in these mutually beneficial options. So based on the above concerns, beneficial options possible, and current neighborhood desirability and stability, I encourage you to return the rezoning proposal, as well as the proposed infill regulation changes, to the planning board for further planning, understanding, considerations, and improvements. And I understand now that we can't do one of those, but it would be good to better understand those in this case. So thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
May I ask Mel a question? Mel, can you, can you expand a little bit on, when you talk about neighborhood stabilization, can you talk about what that looks like to you?
Sure. It's, it's mentioned in the land use plan several times. But stabilization is the condition of a neighborhood where homeowners can feel comfortable in investing in their homes, not, not just holding them for speculation. And we see the effects of that. It, it's important that homeowners are in these neighborhoods. It's good that they are mixed with homeowners and investors. But it's important that they're stable by having people in the neighborhood that care about the neighborhood and, and will set examples of how to maintain and, and take care of it. Does it, does that help?
That is helpful, yeah, thank you.
And I think I could come up with several others.
Sure, no.
I'd be happy to share them with you once I do.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the first, oh, no, she's-
Sorry. By the way, the, um, two lots to the east of that-
Excuse me?
Res zoning area are both owner occupied.
Excuse me?
Are both owner occupied now.
I'm sorry. Anne, can you state your name and your address, please?
Right. My name is Anne Kush, and my home is at four oh five and four oh nine Vatier Street. This is input for the consent agenda item to rezone, obviously. I asked the commission to move, to do what you just did. I have four concerns. My home is within the two-hundred-foot notification area, and I attended the October sixteen neighborhood meeting where only the owners of three thirty presented. The owner of three twenty-six was absent. We don't know what his plans are, except he has that house for sale now. The neighborhood targeted by this rezoning request is and has been doing a great job of providing a mix of affordable housing, both owner-occupied and rental, under the current zoning. Granted, the future land use map tries to guide its zoning changes over the next ten to twenty years, but that future is not here, not yet. The zoning history for this neighborhood established single-family zoning in two thousand and four and kept it in two thousand and twenty-two for good reasons. My concerns, okay, anyway, yeah, the, the two lots to the east are both owner occupied now. The one neighbor who's lived there for twenty years said, sold to a family with three kids. So that, it's not for sale anymore because it's sold. Is the RM zoning the best available zoning change to maintain compatibility? As you can see, the rezoning area is kind of a island stuck in the middle there, and it's surrounded by residential. We have to assume that both, both near and distant future applications of this zoning at its worst-case, most dense, where both lots would be the most highly utilized, can occur, no matter who builds, and in the near and distant future. We are not voting on the Burton three thirty plan and intentions. I'm sure there will intention, but things happen. Second, is there a current mania to approve spot zoning at any cost for the sake of housing? So maybe stepping back, taking a breath, and more carefully considering long-lasting decisions seems advisable. Given the, three, given the most dense application of the RM zoning, is the dense, dusty, unpaved, one-lane alley adding, adding to the current parking and traffic load enough to handle all the vehicles and trash trucks? It really isn't. Especially, you don't scoop, you don't plow the alleys and think of what would have hap, what hap, I, I live on a dusty alley, and people are getting stuck all the time behind my house. Plus, the parking on Fourth Street would go way up because more people, they have visitors, they got to park somewhere. And it, it's one block north of the roundabout, and it just is a safety issue. In the staff report, it implies that, it makes a big deal about the number of rentals and the commercial stuff on east, all the red stuff. However, this, these two lots are farther west and are more a part of the regular neighborhood. Apparently, three twenty-six was added because three thirty could not apply for rezoning unless he had two lots, because he needed the space. So Dana Cook agreed to go along with it, apparently. So anyway, the, the staff report is implying that all these rentals and the commercial are contagious and justify this change. Well, I guess I don't agree, right? First, there isn't anything wrong with the rental. A healthy mix in Manhattan is needed and desirable. That said, the adjacent housing, the adjacent housing to the east, like I said, they're now owner occupied. Also, the two rentals, there's two rentals in the staff mapping that aren't rentals at all. And how they determine that is questionable in terms of accuracy. They do not use the rent or registration database, interestingly enough. Again, this neighborhood did not grow toward the commercial area. It was this, anyway, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your remarks.
My name's Zach Burton. My wife, Michelle, and I are a co-applicant on this project at three thirty Vatier, which we own, along with Dana Cook, who has Kansas Realty Holdings, LLC. And he owns the lot just to the east at three twenty-six Vatier. The current comprehensive plan, as Stephanie mentioned, designates these two lots as commercial, but we really didn't feel like that was the right application for this neighborhood. We did have a neighborhood meeting. We had twelve to sixteen people show up, whether or not you count spouses in that number, but large attendance. We held it on the lot. We held it at five thirty for the maximum attendance for the neighborhood to make sure that everybody could be heard. We got a lot of comments from the neighborhood that we've really incorporated into our design plans for this. One of them comes from the person where the cursor is on that lot, the single-family owner, who asked that we build a fence on the entirety of the east line, speaking more towards Mr. Cook's lot. Whatever development happened, he'd just like to see a fence along that side of the house to kind of, to separate his yard from, from any redevelopment that would happen. We thought that was a great idea, and it's something that we're going to incorporate. The RM zoning that you're talking about without the OEN actually is less invasive to the community because the setbacks are larger. So whatever buildings that would be built there aren't going to come all the way out to the road. They're going to be more in line with the houses that are there and keep more of that traditional neighborhood feel, even though that's kind of counterproductive, I guess, to the way that things are. I guess, to the way that things are titled. It actually does help the neighborhood a lot more. We are taking a lot that has been vacant since 2008, which is on its current tax rolls for $30,000, and we want to build five one-bedroom townhomes here. It's going to be a project that'll be around $750,000-plus. And there's McDonald's directly across the street, there's Kentucky Fried Chicken at the end of the block, there's a new strip mall that's on the alley behind us at the end of the block. And so to say that this is still a traditional family neighborhood, I don't necessarily think that this fits the bill. You guys had another rezoning request that came before you guys at the corner of 11th and Leavenworth recently, and a lot of these same concerns were brought up. It's right along City Park, there's a lot of old historic houses that are in the neighborhood. There's Lily McDonald's drive-through right across the street. So the idea that it's a traditional family neighborhood, on many sides, there's a church caddy corner, and like I said, other commercial businesses in the area. That's not to say that we don't care about the people who have homes here. And so we're not trying to ram an Arby's with a drive-through down their throat or an AutoZone Auto Parts on this site. We don't feel like that would be good development practice. Parking, as we mentioned, it's going to, we don't want to add to the problems that would come off the roundabouts, or we're proposing that all the parking would come off of the alley. It would keep that from people backing out of driveways into Fourth Street, just be safer. A lot of these things have been discussions we've had with staff as well on how we can do that. As Mr. Borsch alluded to, we want to face the front of it towards Fourth Street, and we believe that townhomes really are a great buffer between the commercial neighborhood across the street and the neighborhood that people do want to protect and the other areas. And I want you to think a little bit, if you can, about Fourth Street. Strasser Village is there. You have Hy-Vee, you've got Dick's Sporting Goods, you have a lot of other commercial businesses, and between those and the residential areas to the west, there's townhomes. It's just good, it's good planning practice, and it's something that we'd like to implement, obviously, here on this site. We do not have any intentions of expanding to the north or to the west. We just feel like this would be a good buffer spot to buffer some of those neighborhoods, as we mentioned, with townhomes. Currently, to the west, there is a four-bedroom, four-bath house that's under construction. So when we talk about density, when we talk about driving parking on this deal, currently with the current zoning, we could build a four-bedroom, four-bath house on this place. We're talking about five one-bedroom townhomes, so it's one more bedroom and one more bathroom. We're not trying to put a whole lot more density on this site. We're really going to keep it about the same as what we could do if it wasn't rezoned. Our biggest complaint, honestly, from our neighborhood meeting was we don't want college housing in our neighborhood. A four-bedroom, four-bath house on this site is probably going to attract that. If we build five one-bedroom townhomes, they're going to be designated towards the workforce housing price range. We really feel like we can provide ample opportunity for professional people to be within walking distance of places where they can work, to be within walking distance of downtown, and that's really what we're trying to do here, is do an infill project that really beautifies the neighborhood, buffers it from the commercial development, and try to do right by everybody. I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Can I clarify something real quick? So I did just look. At the time of application, this lot right here was owned by the same applicant as the one right to the east. It looks like that home sold in late November after we already had this application, so the comment that you heard is correct. That one is now owner-occupied.
And Stephanie, in regards to the RLA, is that just due to the proposed five units instead of four? Is that right?
Typically, that could be part of it. He requested it.
Yeah.
I think that staff would have been comfortable with any sort of higher-type-density residential RLA potentially could have worked there, going from what the future land use map designates as CC to RM seemed very appropriate in this case.
Okay.
And, sorry, I think I asked this already, but just to be clear, the Burton project is only the single lot to the...
I can't speak to that. You could have Zach come back up. He might be able to answer that for you.
Well, that's not really part of our decision either.
Okay.
The condition, yeah.
Sorry. Any other comments or questions for Stephanie or Zach? Do we have a... Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? All right, seeing none, we will close public comments on this item. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I move we approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning two lots from low-density residential RL district to with established neighborhood overlay OEN to medium-density residential RM district.
Second.
Commissioner Minton has approved, has made a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning two lots from low-density residential to established neighborhood with established neighborhood overlay to medium-density residential, and Commissioner Mata has seconded.
Could I just say before we call the roll, this has been very difficult for me because I know how much we need infill housing. We've really got to have things down there. On the other hand, it seems like we're doing a lot of what we call spot zoning and not contiguous to, you know, some of the other things. We just want to say it's going to be, I think we just have to accept this, but I'm not happy about it. I'm not happy that we're not kind of finding a way to work with the neighborhood more.
Any other comments? Jamie, do you want to... Brenda, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item nine on the agenda, which is our reorganization.
I would like to ask the commission for nominations for mayor.
I move that we nominate Susan Adamcheck as mayor until the first working Tuesday of January 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing no other nominations for mayor, I will now call the roll.
Sorry, can I say anything? I would... Can I make a nomination as well, or can I decline to be nominated?
Yes, you can. If you would wish to decline your nomination and nominate someone else, that is your prerogative, and then we will have an election.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Commissioner McCullough to be mayor next year.
Second.
And Commissioner Mata has seconded it? Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Karen?
Now it's your turn to nominate the board.
I'd call for a nomination for the new mayor pro tem. I thought Brenda did... You don't ask that, Brenda? Yeah.
I would like to ask the commission for nominations for Mayor Pro Tem.
I move that Commissioner Susan Adamcheck be appointed to serve as Mayor Pro Tem until the first working Tuesday of January 2026.
Second.
Hearing no other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem, I will call the roll. Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay.
Comments from the outgoing mayor?
As I indicated earlier on, it's been a tremendous privilege to hold this position for the six months that I have been here. Learning curve was pretty strict, pretty sharp, but I very much appreciated the support that I've had from staff. It was a challenging time, as we were also going through the recruitment process for Danielle. There was a lot of balls in the air, but everyone has been extremely professional and extremely supportive. It's been an honor and a privilege to represent the citizens of Manhattan, and I'm grateful that I will have the opportunity to do so again in the future. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much. I'm just going to have a few brief comments. You know, they say the third time's a charm, so maybe I can get it right this time. 2024 was a year of rebalancing. We had to rebalance the budget, we had to explore possibilities with housing and parking recreation, and just how to support city services. Luckily, we had Commissioner Mata, who brought continuity to our board, because I'd been away for seven years. And of course, Commissioner Linton and Commissioner Opel, who really, I've been on them for a long time, and I've never seen people really just kind of jump in and take the reins so well. And of course, Commissioner Adamcheck is amazing. I don't know anybody who had three or four months of city commissioning under their belt and had to then become mayor, and we really appreciate the really good job you've done and impressive welcomes. Anyway, and I'd like to thank Jason Hilgers for keeping us, sort of, for stepping up and keeping the whole thing going until Danielle Dolan came on board, and we welcome her, and the first few months have been good. You know, we've had a lot of public input this year, and I applaud that. I really do think it's important. Always surprises me, people watch this on TV. I mean, you know, there's 100 channels out there. You'd think they could find something more interesting. And I hope we can channel this public input into citizen participation and consensus rather than opposition. 2025 looks tough, and of course, a big bite out of the budget came with a storm. I'm really impressed with the amount of snow and the amount of time and miles. I'm afraid I'm going to be equally impressed or depressed when the price tag comes because, you know, this is not cheap, and starting off with a blizzard is not ideal. But it did demonstrate the city's preparedness and the level of service that's evident in other areas, from fire to police to parking wrecks to water and on and on. So I would hope we can maintain that level in the future, and I would like to thank everybody for having their trust in me, and I'll do my best job. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. We need to recess into an executive session. Oh, the briefing, I'm sorry. Yeah, good. Keep me on the board.
Commissioner McCullough, I will make this very brief. Behind me, wait, am I doing it?
You're on.
Switching of the plates.
So behind me, I do have your upcoming meetings. Rather than reading them off and embarrassing myself, I will let you all take a look. I think we also have a copy there at the dais. If anyone has any questions about any of these upcoming meetings, one of the other things that you have at your dais is just a list of the boards and committees that you all are currently serving on. This is an opportunity for you all to discuss amongst yourselves if you would want to volunteer for other boards or step into other roles and speak with Mayor McCullough and let her know, and then we can certainly get those boards reappointed. Some of them do have term limits on them, but those others, we did talk with the chamber, and that is an invitation to the city manager and the mayor, so that will be going to Mayor McCullough, and then, of course, the CBB is traditionally the mayor pro tem as well. So those are kind of the two that have, not necessarily bylaws, but practices that we have traditionally followed. Happy to answer any questions. Other than that, we can recess into executive session.
Danielle, I don't have a copy of the meetings list. If I could, if some can just email it to me, or... Nope. I just have the board list. Thank you.
There's a long list. One of the things that I just, as I was passing that off to you all, wanted to mention, there is a FEMA training that is coming out for elected officials. So that is on, in February, and we will get that invitation out to all of you, but they're having two sessions, one at 1:00 PM and then one at 5:30 PM. It's an opportunity for you all to take the ICS 402, which is the training for elected officials and what your all's role is during emergencies. And as we have already discussed earlier today, we know that we are not immune from any of these natural disasters, so encourage everyone to attend that if it fits in your calendar. That is up to you all. If you would like to make that shorter, we certainly can. I have a presentation prepared for about 10, 12 minutes, and then want to make sure that you will have an opportunity to weigh in. So if we wanted to limit that to 30 minutes, we can certainly do that, just understanding if we're having a robust conversation, we might need to schedule another executive session to follow up.
Sure, we can always come in.
Yep.
So entertain a motion for an executive session.
Yeah, I'll move that we recess into executive session to conduct a performance review of the city manager pursuant to the exception set forth in KSA 75 Tac 4319B1, allowing for discussion of personnel matters of non-elected personnel, and to resume the open meeting at 7:57 PM in...
Make it eight.
Sure, let's do eight o'clock even in the city commission room.
You'll hear a second for that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Brenda, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
The thought is, and this is from staff...
Yeah.
Let Susan never be mayor again.
Next year, yeah.
Because we're so out of sync and say that... No, I wasn't, you know...
Yeah.
Quite frankly, I almost seconded it. You know, should you not second it, or Jamie not second it? We could be in January with somebody. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if this is the best idea, but quite frankly, if we do do this, I'm making just certain two.
Just sort of two...
I would entertain a motion to go back into executive session for 15 minutes.
I'll move that we recess into executive session to conduct a performance review of the city manager pursuant, is that right? Yeah, pursuant to exceptions set forth in KSA 75 tag 4319b1 allowing for the discussion of personnel matters of non-elected personnel and to resume the open meeting at 8:15 in the City Commissioner room.
Second.
And moved in second, would you call the roll please?
Commissioner Mitten.
Yes.
Mayor McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
Yes.
Commissioner Motta.
Yes.
Ocean Carries five to zero.
Thank you. Oops, sorry, not my place.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn the January 14, 2025 City Commission meeting, sorry Susan.
Second.
Then seconded, would you call the roll please clerk?
Commissioner Mitten.
Yes.
Mayor McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.